Hi, I'm Greg Weiss, your county commissioner, and happy to be with you this morning. Thank you all for coming out. I know the weather is a little bit inclement, but thank you so much for coming out. This is a really important topic we're going to be talking about this morning. Before I get started with my remarks though, I want to recognize my predecessor, former Commissioner Paulette Burdick. Are you here? There you are. Thanks for being here. So, a couple of things, just to, you know, we've had some problems in the past. I'm sure some of you may be aware of it, but, you know, unfortunately, some folks have done renovations on their units without getting permission from their boards. We've had folks use unlicensed contractors and have not pulled permits, and that has created a lot of difficulty for the other unit owners because unfortunately, sometimes when that happens, the work that they do is not up to code and in fact creates a dangerous situation in the units around them and forces our folks from Planning, Zoning and Building to have to tag the building, and those people have to be moved out of their units, which is not fair. They didn't do anything, but they're impacted in a really unfortunate way. Well, the good news though is we have folks from our Planning, Zoning and Building Department, Code Enforcement, that are here. They've got some great presentations to help inform you as to what the requirements are. And this is really about compliance and helping you help your neighbors make sure that they're compliant and that we're keeping everybody safe. So, without further ado, I want to thank the folks from PZMB from being here today. So, let's give them a round of applause. You're going to meet them all. And Yasmeer is here. She's going to lead this off. She's from our Contractor Licensing area, and she's going to get us started. So, thank you, and thanks for all for being here today. And by the way, let me all wish you all, I know last night was the last night of Hanukkah, so thank you for that. And if you're celebrating Christmas, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and have a great and Happy New Year.
Thank you for that great introduction, Commissioner Weiss. It is a pleasure to be here. My name is Yasmeer McLeod. I am from Palm Beach County Contractor Certification. We're a division in PZMB, which is the greatest department in the county, okay? And I work for a great division, which is Contractor Certification. I have an awesome supervisor, Jeremy Dennis, and an even awesomer director, which is Mr. Oscar Alvarez. Okay, so I'm going to tell you a little about what we do. This is our mission statement, and the most important part of this is what's in black and bold, which is having a licensed contractor. That license, having a licensed contractor, he's qualified, he or she is qualified, and it's the law. It is not just for our benefit, but it's more so for your benefit to hire a licensed contractor. And that's what we're here to ensure, that you are protected, okay? So, what we do. There are thousands of dollars lost every year by hiring unlicensed contractors. They don't finish the work, they take money, they leave, and sometimes the individuals are just lost. Now, they have to fix what was never done, and they have lost money. So, the way that we do this is by regulating, monitoring, investigating, and prosecuting, insuring, and partnering. So, how do we regulate contractors? We have a part of our division that makes sure that any contractor that works in Palm Beach County is licensed, they're registered with our department, they're up to date with their insurance, and all of that information is available on our website. Monitoring, investigating, and prosecuting. We take in complaints for unlicensed contractors, and we have a process that they receive fines. We also educate them and give them the information so that if they're not licensed and they have the qualifications to become licensed, they can do that as well. We ensure by, we do auditing. We go out in the community. We look at some of the vehicles, the advertisements that are going out of Palm Beach County. Sometimes we come into Century Village here in Boca, and we see advertisements that have been posted from unlicensed contractors. And that is one way we ensure that that information is not left there. And we also then go and investigate that information that contractor has left all over the county. And we also partner with the cities, the different municipalities, as well as law enforcement and other departments in the county to assist the consumer with whatever they need to make sure that either they can, we can help them as much as possible, and if necessary, how they can pursue to retrieve money or any loss that they may have endured during that time. Contractors requirement. We all, our license division does a background check. Again, they make sure that the contractor that is registered with the county is licensed, that they have the insurance, that they have a clear background. We also make sure that they have a number of years of experience so that we know that they are able to do the job. They can also be licensed with the state, but if they're licensed through the county, these are the ways that we ensure that they are qualified to do the work. Okay, let me see. Yeah, because it's not working. Just a second, we're having a little issue. Okay, these are the 40 trades that we regulate. I'm not going to go over all of them, but any work that you are having done, nine out of 10, this is a trade that is regulated, and they have to have a license. We see signs all the time that say handyman. There's no such thing. Any work that they're doing, they need to be licensed. Okay, what, these are our tips and warnings, but it's really red flags. Red flags mean stop. If you see any of this occurring in the conversations that you're having when you're seeking for a contractor, stop, call us. We have a website that you can look up your contractor. That's if they give you their business tag as their license number. If the contractor prefers to work on the weekends or after hours, that's when we're closed. If they request a large deposit at the beginning of the contract without even doing any work, they only communicate through oral conversation. There's no contract, there's no email. You don't have a lot of contact information for them. If you're, if they're unable to provide you with their insurance. If you see any advertisement, which is flyers, business cards, even vehicles that are wrapped with all their information, a lot of times, it looks pretty, but they are unlicensed as well. If you, if someone other than the contractor obtains a permit, they will tell you to obtain the permit. The permit may be in a licensed contractor's name that's not theirs, that is aiding and abetting. The licensed contractor is aiding and abetting an unlicensed contractor. And basically, that unlicensed contractor is paying that contractor to pull a permit, okay? They're not licensed. Potential problems with hiring an unlicensed contractor. You lose money. You lose your hard-earned money when you hire an unlicensed contractor. You're going to pay twice because if they are unlicensed, you don't know what they're capable of. You can face structural damage to your property, which is going to cost you to do the repairs. It's not a safe environment for you if they do damage to your property or they do something improperly. You face those damages. Here, we have a quick and easy step to verify. This is our website. You can look up a contractor through their name, their contract, their license number, their company name. And this will tell you if their insurance is active, if they're actively working in this county. And if you don't see anything that come up, that means that they're not licensed and they're not registered with the county. As you can see here where it says, in the green, where you see all green, at the top is the contractor's license. Now, that license is a state-licensed contractor. We have two, you have state license and you have county license. Whenever there's a state license, there are three to two letters in front of the number, and it's followed by seven numbers. For the county, you will always see a U in front of the number and then five digits. You can always, if you're not tech savvy and, well, I say computer savvy and not able to log onto a computer, we also have a phone number you can call. Someone will answer your call, and if they cannot give you the answer, you will get a call back within that day, usually that day, but definitely within 24 hours. These are some of the horror stories. Okay. And remember, we also have pamphlets here at the front that have our business card and all the information. So, please, if you haven't got it, you can get it at the end of this presentation. This is something that was done by an unlicensed contractor, and this is what the homeowner was left with. These are advertisements that unlicensed contractors have. It looks pretty, it looks efficient, and you would believe that that person would be licensed. Paved man. You don't see a license number, you don't see an insurance information, but they have a website, and they have an official billboard that's up, but they're unlicensed. How to file a complaint. Again, here's our number where you can call. We will email you a complaint if you cannot come in and pick it up yourself. We also will mail you out a complaint if you, again, are not computer savvy. We'll make sure that you can get a complaint, a complaint form, and if you need, we do assist with filling it out if you come in. We go over and beyond, and that's what our division is all about, making sure we help the consumers. This is, again, our contact information. We also have our cue card. PZMB is now on social media, on Facebook and Instagram. So, if you, again, are not computer savvy or tech savvy, you have grandkids, friends, young, there are all types of ways to get this information, and social media is just another way that we're getting this information out. Now, we have the Construction Industrial License Board. We are looking for two new members of this, for this board, it's a board of 15 members. And if you know anyone or you're looking to become a member of the board, there are criterias, which one is being an architect. We have one seat for that, and we also have one seat for a roofing contractor. Our board looks over, for us, they look over the complaints that have had an appeal, and they make a judgment call on our investigation. So, again, if you know anyone or if you're interested, this is the qualifications, and our information is here on our pamphlets. Please feel free to come up and get one. And if you have any questions, we will do that at the end of this presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Richard Paget. I'm a senior code enforcement officer with the Palm Beach County Code Enforcement Division under Planning, Zoning and Building. I'm the area supervisor. That Century Village is within my area. I work under Director Pagan and code manager Rick Torrance. And I also have a familiar face here that some of you may know, John Gennati. Go and give John a round of applause. So, our mission is to uniformly and consistently enforce ordinances and land development regulations and promote and protect the health, safety, welfare, and quality of life for residents, businesses, and tourists of Palm Beach County. Our vision is to maintain our neighborhoods and communities' quality of life while enforcing regulations in a timely and equitable manner and serve the public professionally with integrity and respect. Our response to complaints, as you can see, back in 2018 and years past, it took us up to 10 days to respond to a complaint. Our current policy is three business days as long as it's not a life safety issue. And our current average, we're doing even better than our goal. We're at about two days. Any type of life safety violation, which could be a structural issue that we're partnering with the Building Division on or a pool being unsecured, something of that nature, we generally get to those same day. We try to do a one-day response time to those. In 2022, code enforcement investigated 7,942 complaints. We issued 4,047 notices of violation. Of those, 77% of the cases closed in compliance before the magistrate hearing. So, our goal is voluntary compliance. We don't want to take you to hearing. We would much rather work with you, have a good relationship, help guide you through the process, and keep you out of the hearing. Majority of the time, we're successful in that. 23% of the cases did require a special magistrate hearing. And also, the adjudicated cases, say you have a permit issue, and it takes you a little more time to come into compliance, and you start running the daily fine that the special magistrate sets. We have a mechanism in place for fine modifications. That way, again, all we're looking for is voluntary compliance. Once you come into compliance with that, then you can come back before the special magistrate, explain what kind of challenges you had in coming into compliance, and the fines are greatly, greatly substantially reduced. Some common code enforcement violations are expired permits. Those are if you have an active building permit, and you go six months without having an inspection done, it can turn inactive. And nowadays, those actually turn to void status, so you would have to start over from day one. Pool water and safety barriers. Pools are required to be free of algae and have clear water, have Florida Building Code safety barriers in place for safety. Dead trees. Any of the trees in Century Village are on common area, and you would have to have a tree replacement permit to address any of those issues. Overgrown vegetation, trash and debris, unpermitted structures, fire codes. So, we, in addition to being the enforcement end of Planning, Zoning and Building, we also enforce the, we assist the fire department in enforcing the fire codes for the fire marshal. We're the ones that actually cite those and bring those to hearing as well. And other violations are exterior, interior, and disrepair. Couple pictures showing some violations. The top one is a vehicle without a tag. Any vehicle that's parked on private properties is required to be licensed, have the tag affixed, and be in proper repair. It shouldn't be sitting there in disrepair with four flat tires and immobile. Bottom picture. And all of these are actually from in Century Village. So, if you recognize them, it's not to, not to pick on anyone. It's just to give good examples so hopefully everyone understands. The pile of trash and everything out there would probably require a special pickup from the garbage hauler, so the association would need to call that in. And on the right's just a photo of a, it looks like something that probably was not done by a licensed electrician. Here's some examples of exterior and disrepair. A lot of the times, this happens because, as you know, all of the structures in Century Village have some age on them at this point, and they require proper maintenance and upkeep over the years. Some of these probably were showing signs of this long ago. A board probably went the cheap route, had a handyman come out and caulk it, put some putty over it and paint over it to try to hide it. But as you can see, the structural issues do continue decaying underneath, and then eventually, it turns into a safety issue like this. And repairing any of these would require a building permit and a licensed contractor. Some more examples. The one on the left is from the removal of a wall, the one that's between the kitchen and living area. You know, when these structures were built, you had a lot of walls. Nowadays, everyone wants to have the nice open floor plan. And unfortunately, some of these walls actually support the structure. The one on the left, I believe, was removed, and the gentleman upstairs found out that his floor was sinking. So, again, like Commissioner Weiss said earlier, a lot of the things you do, you're not just affecting yourself, you're affecting the livelihood of other people and their safety. The photo on the right is of an exterior door. Because these are multifamily condo structures, you do have to have a building permit just to remove and replace a door or window, or et cetera. And these are just some more photos showing some interior work that was done without permits. You know, the showers are very important to make sure you have both permits and a licensed contractor because a lot of mold and issues can occur if you have someone that doesn't know what they're doing. Again, we have emphasis on voluntary compliance. If we try to provide great customer service, help you find a solution and work with you to address the issues, and help get you to compliance. Because again, we don't look forward to taking you to the special magistrate hearing, and that's not what we're here for. Some circumstances that affect a timely resolution. Lack of communication. Sometimes, we don't hear from a respondent until the day of the hearing, and they show up and say, "I just need more time." Well, if you'd have contacted your code officer and stayed in contact with them throughout the process, you would generally get more time to come into compliance. Access issues, permitting. You're going to hear from the Building Division in a little while. It takes time to get the permits, to have a contractor submit everything, go through the review process and get the permits issued. Lack of legal service can also affect a timely resolution. Sometimes, we have people that make a complaint, and then they call us back the next day wanting to know why we haven't done anything about it yet. So, Florida Statute 162 requires us to issue a notice of violation to make someone aware they have a violation. And part of that is we have to have good service on it. Wherever the address of record is, and a lot of the units in here, maybe someone that only lives here part-time, so maybe they live in New York, their mailing address is in New York. We send the certified mail, and it goes there, but they're actually here at the time. So, in that instance, we would have to post the notice on the door or at the county courthouse. And that's the reason that a lot of times we have to post on the actual property, and people sometimes call us and say, "Why'd you do that? I don't want people knowing my business." Well, it's required under the state law. Personal or economic challenges. Again, that could be one reason that people don't reach out to us. They see on the notice of violation that up to $1,000 a day fine, and for whatever reason, they're just scared to reach out. And I also spoke about seasonal residence. So, that's our contact information. 561-233-5500 is our phone number for the main line for the office where you can call in and file a complaint or check up on the status of a previous complaint. And you can also email us at pzbcode@pbcgov.org. It should say O-R-G there at the end. But thank you for your time. It's a pleasure being here. And hold your questions. We'll be here after the presentation to speak with you if you have any further questions. And I would like to introduce Mr. Michael Gogger from the Building Division.
Thank you, sir. Fair enough. Well, good morning, everybody. My name is Michael Gogger. I am the Building Division Coordinator for Palm Beach County Building Division. This is a great crowd. Thank you, everybody, for coming out today. We really do appreciate each and every one of you guys coming out. This is a great event, not just for you, but for us as well, to help educate and get involved within the community, which is very important. A little bit about what we do. Our mission statement for the Building Division is we ensure life and property safety within the built environment through consistent enforcement of the building construction regulations. We enforce the Florida Building Codes as well as the floodplain management through FEMA. I also forgot to mention we have a special guest today here, our building official at Palm Beach County, who's Doug Weiss. So, he's been a very great mentor to myself as well. Give you guys some metrics, you know, just so you know that we're not up at the office doing nothing all day. Who here has pulled a permit? All right, so a good number of you guys. So, just so you can see, these are the amount of permits that we have by year. You know, you can see we're going down a little bit, but last year in 2020, or this year in 2023, we've done just under 73,000 permits, you know? And with the permits, each time we look at those, we have several reviews with that as well. So, our plans examiners usually touch those two to three times as well. So, you've got to imagine, that's a large number there. To give you guys the construction costs, in 2023, we went just under $2.5 billion in construction costs in unincorporated Palm Beach County. So, you can see, I'll go back. You can see the permit number went down, but the dollar value went up. So, you can see where inflation hit. Inspection activity. In 2023, we did 216,000 inspections on permits. That's about 17,000 averaging each month. Today, I think we had 863, just in today. When is a permit not required? A great question that many of you guys usually ask. A permit is not required for smaller items like fixture changeouts. What do we mean by fixture changeout? If you're changing out a faucet, a sink, a toilet, or your dishwasher, that wouldn't require a permit. Now, you can do the work yourself, or you can hire somebody else. But if you hire somebody else, they must be licensed, just like Yasmeer spoke of earlier. And you'll also be liable for the damage if anything happens to it if you do it yourself. So, take that into consideration when you're doing it. Water heater repairs. Not changing out the water heater. That requires a permit, but just repairing it. So, if one of the heating elements goes bad, you can go ahead and do that without having a permit. Drywall repairs. Not the cement board. Not changing out a whole wall, a drywall, because that requires fire rating. So, you'll have to have a permit for that. But if you hit something on your wall and you've got to patch it up, no permit required for that. Receptacles and light fixtures. If you're changing out something, like for like, if you have a light fixture or a fan or a receptacle, you have a light fixture, or a fan, or a receptacle, if it's going in the exact same outlet, you won't require a permit. And remember, always hire a licensed contractor. Also, take note, I don't know how many people own other buildings in other municipalities, but this is also just for unincorporated Palm Beach County. This is for your building here. The Building Division does not require permits for the interior floor installation. Other places, you might have that, but for Palm Beach County, you might not. But take note, your HOA might require it, so make sure you check with them. Popular condo permit requests. The interior alteration. Here is your kitchen and bathroom remodels, the change of the layouts. When you're moving or removing a wall, a lot of times, you guys want that open floor space for your kitchen. That's going to require a permit. That's a popular one here. The tub-to-shower conversions. You no longer want the tub, you want that walk-in shower. That's going to require a permit. Majority of the time, you'll have to have a building contractor or a general contractor. Sometimes, you can get away with a plumbing contractor, as long as they're putting in a fixture that doesn't require anything going into the building. So it'll be, it'll almost be a fixture that goes in, they set it on top, and no permit's required, but you can get a plumber for that. AC and water heater changeouts, that requires a permit. And door and window changeouts, going to impact or shutters, that's going to require a permit as well. Here's an example. A lot of you guys have the enclosures on the back of your units. They went from the lanai, they went from the screen units, and then, over time, someone's replaced them with the jealousy windows. What happens now is, a lot of times, people go to change them out to the impact windows. There wasn't a permit pulled the first time they changed it out. Now, what happens is, we have to, instead of doing an impact window and door changeout permit, we have to do an enclosure permit for that. So just as it was if you were doing it from the beginning, we go ahead and make sure that everybody's up to code, and doing it as an enclosure, not just a door and window changeout. Can you perform the work yourself? No. Not for work requiring a permit. You're allowed to do painting on the interior, you know, as long as you're not changing anything, or doing any work that requires a permit, then you could do it within side the confines of your own unit, you know? So a lot of times, people paint, that doesn't require a permit, you could do that yourself, as well as some of the other items we talked about just earlier. And remember, noncompliant work in one unit may affect another unit. So if you hire somebody, and they remove that wall that's load-bearing underneath you, well, that could affect the person that's above them as well, as we've seen out here within your community, too. So take that into consideration, guys. How many of you guys live in units that are three stories and larger? Okay, a good amount of you, okay. Well, condo laws, the condo associations, they're subject to Chapter 718, which are the condominium laws, as well as the Florida Building Code 553. And the condo associations fall amongst Chapter 718, which you guys can get with your cam. I believe I met Donald earlier, he's in charge of the cam as well, so if you have good questions on condo, reach out to him. Building Division does not enforce any condo or HOA provisions. We only enforce the Florida Building Code. Oh, I'm sorry, young lady. All right. Go back, there you go. You need that?
Nope, I can't read through.
Understandable. All right, here's Surfside. This is the Senate Bill 4D and 154, which is the legislature that just came out recently. This is the building that collapsed down in Miami, Surfside, back in 2021. This building collapsed in just under 12 seconds. So the damage you see happened in just under 12 seconds, where 98 people unfortunately lost their lives. Tal Condo came out with some Florida legislature that changed the law, requiring buildings three stories and above to have a milestone Phase 1 inspection performed by a licensed engineer or architect. The law requires that all buildings that reach 30 years of age before July 1, 2022, have a milestone inspection before the end of 2024. And buildings that reach 30 years of age after July 1, 2022, and before December 31, 2024, they must have a milestone inspection before the end of 2025. Safety inspection requirements. These requirements specify the minimum contents that must be submitted within the milestone inspection reports. The inspection report must be provided to the local building official and the affected associations by the engineer or architect performing the inspection. Inspector-prepared summaries are to be provided to the unit owners by mail or email, depending on which you have, which you're set up for. And the contract between the association and their manager, they must comply with those requirements as directed by their board directors. Now, the Building Division has already sent out our letters, our notification letters. We sent out 180 letter, or I'm sorry, the 180-day deadline letters, which was done on July 1 beginning. We still have a few that are going out there. Now, don't worry, you know, we do understand that times are tough, and engineers and architects are actually hard to come by these days. We do understand that. So if this comes along, and you have an issue, and your condo association is having trouble, please reach out. We do accept extensions from everybody, and we work with you. We're not here to work against you. We want to make sure that everybody's safe, and we're working with you at all times. Palm Beach County Building Division, we've already identified 750 units that are affected within our jurisdiction, 450 of which we've sent the letters out to. And these are all regulated by Chapter, the Florida Statutes 553.899, as well as 110.9 in the Florida Building Codes. And now, we will receive questions from anybody who has... I'm sorry, let me introduce Whitney Carroll, I'm sorry. She is the Executive Director of all of Planning, Zoning, and Building. She is the boss of all of our bosses.
Yeah, I think you're good. I just wanted to say hello. Thank you for allowing us to come and speak with you guys, and for being interested and knowing about these things. And we want to open it up to questions, but I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate my team, and they did a great job, and they do a great job every day, and we're here to help if you need us. And again, my name's Whitney Carroll, and I look forward to hearing some of your questions, and our team will be here to answer them. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm coming for you, young man. Sorry about that.
Yeah, when we get in touch with the contractor, it always says licensed and insured. Now, about the insurance, I understand it's not a regular insurance, it's to satisfy the government, not the client. Or in other words, what kind of insurance? When it says insurance, what kind do we need to protect the client, not what's the...
Great question, sir.
Okay, so that's a part of contractor certification. That's what we make sure that the contractor is registered with the county, whether it's a state licensed contractor or a county licensed contractor. So the specifics of the insurance, I don't have that answer of what is necessary, but the quickest way to find out is, again, by going on our website, or calling into our office, where you can give your contractor's information, the name, the name of the company, or if you have the license number, we can look that up, and we'll tell you if he's licensed and insured, and it's the required, it would be the required insurance. But my director can give you a little bit more specific on that.
Hi, guys. So the insurance, you have general liability, and that depends, you know, the amount, you know, varies. The more important one is the workers' comp. And that is, when they have employees, they have to have a workers' comp. In addition to that, they have to have a workers' comp, I'm sorry, workers' comp. If you have employees, you need to have insurance in case something happens on the... And also, the last one is the bond. They have to have a bond insurance as well. So those are the three types of insurance that we require contractors, either on, when they get the license, or when they renew the license every two years. Did I answer your question, young man? Very good. Thank you. Yes?
Right here. She's coming over to my...
Many of the contractors that you have, or subcontractors, are working under other contractors' licenses. I would say, many of them coming into the village don't have certified, they are not certified themselves, they are subcontractors working under contractors' names. How do you find out about the, these guys, many of them are working with Hispanic people that just about can speak English, so I don't assume that many of them have insurance?
Right. Right. So that's a very good question.
And I have a couple others. Can I...
Not a problem.
Okay.
So on this one, on the first one, let me explain to you. The one way is that licensed contractors can actually hire people to work under their license, okay? However, in certain trades, they do have to hire subcontractors, like electrical, that they have to have their own license, okay? So keep that in mind, that it's possible that under their license, they cover. However, on the subcontractors in which you have doubts, or you would like to know whether they're in fact a licensed, or are required to have a license, I mean, Yasmeer showed you, you know, the slides, call us. That's the only way, because that begins to get a little more complex, and that's our job to figure that out. So if you have that, call us, come to our office, and we'll sort through that. Because when it gets to subcontractors, it gets a little more complicated. And the law, the state law, sometimes protects them, sometimes don't. So don't be shy. I know you're very shy, don't be shy, and come over and talk.
All right, second question.
Yes.
Many times, okay, people are doing work in the village and so forth, and they don't file for a permit, but when you call code, and code comes to the building, they knock on the door, and if the people don't open the door, they don't get answered, okay? So the people do the work and so forth, and it's never been approved, and it's never, the code guy has the... In fact, John Gianni, I've called him several times, I mean, he's had that problem.
It's an access issue.
Okay, let me tell you the other one, okay? Many other people file for a permit. They file for a permit, and let the permit expire, keep on going, and they have three and four guys come in and work under the electric. I've come in and taken pictures of apartments where the whole place is completely torn apart, okay? And all they did was file for a kitchen permit, you know?
Yes, so for access issues, obviously, we're the government, so we fall under the Fourth Amendment. It is private property, so we can't just force someone to allow us in. The only people that can give us lawful access would be the unit owner, the tenant, or someone that has the express...
Which they don't, which they don't.
Right. Well, again, I mean, those are hurdles that we do our best to try and overcome. It just, we can't, we don't have absolute access. I know in a lot of the condo documents, the building directors are allowed to enter a unit if they suspect that the unit is causing issues to other units, such as a leak or something of that nature. However, while the documents give you, as a civilian, access to the unit, it doesn't grant the government access to the unit. So just because you're allowed in, we can't follow you in without the permission of the owner. It's just one of those things, we try to do our best. John is very, very good at speaking with people and getting his way in, if it's possible. Sometimes, it's just not possible.
Okay, thank you.
To answer your second part of the question, then we'll move on to someone else. When you have a licensed contractor, and it happens, they come in, there may be a carpenter, and before you know it, they're changing the electrical panel. When they go beyond their scope, they're in violation, they're considered unlicensed. And those we look into, we have cases like that as well.
Before you go over to the...
This particular case, the woman filed a permit under some other contractor, and this other guy that was doing all of the work was a licensed...
We can talk a little bit on the side if you want, if you guys, I see you have more questions, but you'd like to be just a little bit. Is that okay?
Okay. Before we move on, you made a good statement that somebody is working. If you have, or you believe, an unlicensed contractor is working, and he's actively, they're actively at the site, we do what we have hot calls, where an investigator, a field investigator, such as myself, or the other four that are in the office, will come out. Now, if we see them in the act of doing work, we have our ways of obtaining information. You know, it's what, sometimes, just like code, we don't have access to go in, but what we can see from standing outside and not being invasive, we can utilize that. We can utilize their vehicle, driver's license, if they have, if they have any tools, and it's just some things that gathering enough information, we can, we can utilize that to open up a case. So if you see an active contractor working on a property, and you believe that they're not licensed, call our office, and someone will come out that day.
Are we done? Quick question. We recently had our roof redone, and the roofer was also, the inspector was also the guy that did the wind mitigation. I kind of feel uncomfortable, there doesn't seem to be a check and balance there. Is that legal? Is that okay?
Roofers cannot, in general terms, inspect their own work. As far as mitigation, they can, but I should tell you that we've, you know, we're trying to keep up. You see the number of inspections Mr. Gogger showed you earlier, and we have very scarce, finite resources trying to cover all those inspections. So the re-roofing is very problematic. You know, some years ago, a decision was made here to accept affidavits for scope of work that we couldn't hold them up. If they tear the waterproofing off the top of your building, given the inclement weather we experience like we're getting today, we do not want rain to get into your units and basically damage them. So we would accept affidavits with photographs. That's been kind of problematic. So beginning January 1 of this next year, we're no longer going to take affidavits in Palm Beach County for roofing. We're going to require them to use video inspection. We've got a contract with a video inspector, that we can leverage resources from around the state and our own people to do inspections. So we see what you're saying, but I'm going to tell you, if you want to send us the paperwork on that, we can look into it. The roofer cannot be the inspector.
I appreciate that. I also have another question. I know that the milestone inspections are typically for the buildings three stories and higher. We fortunately did our milestone inspection long before the disaster. How long is that milestone inspection good for?
The statute says we can accept one prior to 2022. If you look at 553.899, it's in the statute. I don't have the exact date, but it says you can use earlier ones, depending on how far back it is. I'd have to see the specific case.
Okay. And one last question. You talked about the enclosure modifications, and many of us are moving into apartments that have been modified long before we were little flickers in our daddy's eyes. How do we deal with these unpermitted modifications, I guess, for the lack of a better word?
The best answer I can give you is due diligence. You can request, send an email in, you can request information, do we have a permit for enclosing this unit? And if there's not a permit for it, then you can request a general inspection from the Building Division. Anybody can request an inspection, we'll come out and give you advice, but I'm going to warn you, it's kind of a double-edged sword, because if we come out and see something, we're obligated under state law, my license and Mike's license and all my inspectors' licenses require them to act upon what they see. But if you come to us, we're generally going to try and help you, instead of hurting you. So I mean, I don't know what to tell you, but it is an important thing. You know, it's one of the most frustrating things that I deal with, is the enclosures on condos, because it's about the spread of fire from unit to unit. When you enclose that, you put a sofa right inside that window. When you had a screened patio, you didn't have a sofa, so flammability, it's outside the unit, you take the doors out, you add conditioned space, it creates a lot of issues. Fire department gets involved. If it's over, you know, over two stories, fire's going to get involved.
Does that also apply to electrical upgrades?
Yeah, there's additional, if it's conditioned space, if they took the sliders off between the unit and the patio, yeah, it's a big deal. And there could be egress windows, too. So if you put solid glass on the outside, and there's a bedroom that, you know, used to be there, now how do you get out? And you're supposed to have emergency escape, rescue opening. So fire wants you to have a way to get out, and a fire, they can put a ladder up and
All right, my question. I have trees that have caused the walkway to rise in areas, which makes it very dangerous for our people to walk back and forth. Can we have those trees taken out? And how many trees do we have to replace them with?
So the zoning division has Landscape Division in zoning. You could contact them, I can get the phone number for you and leave it with you. It would probably require permitting to remove them, but they would tell you exactly what you're allowed to put back, and how many. They'd be able to answer that question. I know there is a recent Florida statute that if... I know there is a, a recent Florida statute that if it's an oak tree, and the roots are causing the damage, there are some parameters within being allowed to remove those, especially if it's a safety issue. But I, I don't want to misspeak about exactly, but generally, it's the amount of trees removed, or the amount that you would have to put back, and zoning would be able to tell you exactly what species and everything would be allowable back.
All right, how about a tree that is not native to Florida?
It could be one of the trees that was on the site plan for your property, and if it was required by landscape, again, you got to check with zoning, find out, is it a zoning tree, is it an erm tree? If it's not native to Florida, it would not be an erm tree. We have like, three kinds of trees, we have erm trees, we have site plan trees, and, yeah, call, call zoning, start with them, ask them if you need a tree removal permit, or what you have to do.
Who's next?
Yeah, we have a, a person that removed a wall, we called, we called your division, and you tried to go in, you couldn't go in, now we have somebody else that did it while we were gone, of course, they always do this when the, the board is not around, and they fix things, they remove walls, and we're not aware. When we become aware of it, we tell you guys, but the second person that's done this lives, has now moved to Argentina, rented the unit out and so forth, it's, it's a nightmare, we get the lawyers involved in that section of it. But me, the removal of the walls bothers me, and we call you, and you say, well, we can't, we can't go in, he won't let us go in. That really bothers me. What are we supposed to do then?
We have the ability, if it's an egregious situation, we would have to pull the plans, if you want to contact us, we can pull the plans, and I don't want to say that, but we have gone in the past to a judge and requested an administrative warrant. It might be better, I would respectfully suggest, and I'm not an attorney, and I don't play one on TV, but it might be better that you, you guys have the authority as the HOA to go in, if you believe this person is jeopardizing the safety of other residents in the building, and document what it is, and send it in to us, then at least we have a case to move forward with.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I would also say engage your HOA attorney in that as well, because administratively, they could get an injunction from the court most likely to, to get you guys in there to see what's going on with it, if it could put your residents in jeopardy.
Hi. I'm in three, I'm in Southampton B, and it's a four story building, and we have on the walkways, yeah, outside the catwalk, there's these metal pieces that they insert to keep, I don't know what's underneath there, but, you know, but there's, there's space underneath there, I guess, and so these metal pieces are on top of this cement to keep everything together, I guess. Anyway, long and short is, I fell on my face, because they're not down properly, I wrote an email to the board members, 2022, after I had neck surgery two months before, telling them it's dangerous, and I ended up being the one, like, two months ago who fell on it. What are they going to do, and when are they going to do it, because it's dangerous, and it's been told over and over, not just by me, who fell and slammed my face into the ground, okay, but other people.
Have you contacted code enforcement for an inspection previously, or were you just dealing with this between the board?
I just contacted the board, I didn't know who else to contact.
Okay, well, we can go out and inspect it. My card's up here, and also you can call 233-5500, but I'll get your information afterwards, and I'll put in the complaint myself, and make sure we get out and check it.
Got it. Thank you.
When a permit has interior improvement on it, what exactly does that mean? And I looked up these two permits, how long does it take to get onto the website that a permit has been pulled, because I don't see it listed on the website, so.
That's a great question. You know, depending on the interior alteration, you know, it's, it's, the contractor submits the plans to, you know, the plans reviewer, the building department, as far as the permit wise, you know, it becomes in, it becomes a PR number, which is a plan review number, and then as soon as our plans reviewer goes through, checks, makes sure everything's up the building code, the Florida building code, then it becomes a permit, it's issued once all the fees are paid, then it'll be tacked on to the, you know, to the website, to online. But...
It's, it would be instantly, it would show up, if you go on the portal, type in the address, it would show up either as a draft, or in process, or active, or complete, and I think it would show up as inactive, too. So all the statuses show up on the portal, if you go on the portal and type in the address, so if it doesn't show up, it doesn't exist.
So it's a, a permit that's called...
It could be, people have, in my career, I have seen people forge a permit from a municipality and show it to the customer, so, you know, one, one of the lines I always give people is say, before they start working in your unit, ask them to show you a permit, and if they don't have one, say, come back when you have one. But the other side is, they can forge it. If you, if it's suspicious, it sounds like it looks suspicious, you went online and you couldn't verify, then you need to email us, email me, email Mr. Gogger, he's got business cards here, and we can research it, and, you know, that could be a, a case for, you know, contractor certification, we identify who this person is that's forging permits. Could be they're unlicensed.
Call us if you have any questions.
Hi, just wondering what the procedure is, after we reported someone in the building that was doing work without a permit, he told the board he was doing flooring, but it ended up, he took down walls, he put in a whole new kitchen, he changed the water heater, they did, John was out and looked in the unit and said that he was, you know, a letter was being sent. Then what happens after that? The board doesn't get notified, I take it?
So, yeah, so like I spoke up to earlier, we're required to give proper notice, we have to achieve service, whether it be by certified mail, or in person, or posting. If they're doing work without permits, it will generally start off, give them 30 days to, oh, can be whistled up? We'll generally give them 30 days to make contact with us, the compliance deadline. In a perfect world, hopefully, they make contact with us, they hire a contractor, they get working on it. It just depends as far as timeframe, if they don't make contact with us during that initial compliance period, then we'll go ahead and schedule it for a hearing before the special magistrate to get the case adjudicated, where they'll be given additional time to come into compliance, or they'll receive a daily fine. And that fine, if they still continue ignoring us, would turn into a lien on the property.
They did, code enforcement did get in the place to look. I'm just wondering, does it get inspected again by a licensed electrician plumber?
So when they get the proper permits, each trade, the, the plumbing, the electrical, the structural, it would prompt an inspection from the building division, and if it's unsafe or incorrect, or not in compliance with Florida building code, then they'll instruct the contractor to, to change it, and yes, multiple, multiple inspections.
Yes, I, I, I have a, a two-part question. Number one, if somebody applies for a permit, is it required for that permit be posted on a window, so the people in that building could see the scope of the work that is being performed? And number two is that, if somebody applies for a permit, it gets on the building, could they start the work before the permit is granted?
Okay, let me answer the second question first, the answer is no. They apply for a permit, they cannot start the work before the permit is issued. Under specific circumstances which take approval from all the agencies involved, we can give early start approval, but that's basically a permit to get started without, you know, up to the first inspection. Now, the first part of the question, do they have to post it on the window? You know, they, they, they are supposed to have, the law says they're supposed to have the permit on site for inspection at any time. The point is, the permit itself is not going to show the whole scope, it could say interior alterations, because we have permit descriptions, you're not going to know exactly, without seeing the plans, you can't even tell what the whole scope is. So it creates a little bit of an issue, but we have, it's also available online, so if they're working in a unit, and anybody has a question, go onto the web portal, any person can type in any address and look at permits. There's an exemption for if it's a protected record, if you're a former law enforcement officer, a former judge, can, you know, code enforcement officer, all the, all the exemptions that are in Florida statute section 119, those you can't see, and it's, so if you run into the one of those, you can send me an email, or send code enforcement an email, we can all answer, is there a permit or not, and what is the scope of permit? Yeah, it, well, but they still got it, yeah, so Rick's making a good point, there is a thing in the code that is emergency repairs of systems, say you got a water heater that's leaking, that's an emergency repair. So that allows your plumbing contractor, a licensed contractor, in the case of your buildings, there is nobody here in a single family building, a single family dwelling, is there? Raise your hand if you're in a single family dwelling. You're not, okay, I know that. And so, the point is, they can't just go in and do stuff, you know, without a permit. Everything in these units is regulated because it affects everyone else. Your water heater leaks on an upper floor, it's going to affect everybody down below. So the bottom line is, you can do emergency repairs, but you need a plumber, and the plumber would need to notify us before. So we have, they can send us an email, they can let us know it's an emergency repair. We issue water heater replacement permits while they wait, they basically can apply if they're in our, what we call the decal program, AC contractors and/or water heater replacement, plumbing contractors can get the permit, they just have to apply, and they get their own, they issue their own permit. It's what we call the self-issued. The system knows they're licensed, they knows, knows they're approved in a certain program, and we'll give them a permit. So that, to say, well, we've applied for the permit, it's okay, that, no. But if there's an emergency, and maybe they're not in the program, we still want them to go ahead, but they have to notify us. Does that help?
Hi, my name is Belinda Flores from Stratford H. Doug, I have a question for you, over here.
I, I wanted to put a face with the name, because I've seen your name in a lot of emails, Belinda, it's nice to meet you.
You too. The question I have, and, and I know you put it out for everybody to know, that in order to get a permit, that the association has to do the approval of the work, am I correct on that?
Yes and no. So the point is, we're not empowered by the statutes to require HOA approval for work, with the exception of, if it's HOA property. So the question is, are they working in common area? Are they working on the structure? Are they working on common elements? Those are all HOA property. But if they're just working inside the unit, then, you know, as far as I know, we're not empowered to enforce HOA regulations. That does not mean they don't need your approval. They do. Every permit we issue states on its face, they need HOA approval, it warns them. So if they don't do that, then they're, am I allowed to say stupid?
I would, yeah, I, I'll go with that. The other question I have is, when they get a permit, and they don't get the, the draft plan to the association, they say, oh, we're only going to paint and tile. What happens is, they get the permit, and they let the association see it, but then when they, once they get the permit, they do everything else, they demolish what's inside.
A permit is a public record, anyone can ask, we have a portal, you can submit online, you just go to the county PCB administration website, there's a link on PCB administration for, for public records requests, you can just fill it out, and they will pull the plans, anything that's in our system is a public record, whether it's been issued or not, but I would be careful about asking for stuff that's not been issued, because technically, it's not permitted.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Let me come around.
Hi, thank you. I just want to confirm, yes, we have this list of specialty trade contractors, you're saying that anybody doing any painting, except for the unit owner, or any floor work, except for putting down carpeting, requires a permit to be issued, and they must be licensed?
So for, there are a lot of trades that need license, Adam, Oscar, can you answer this, if, if a painter, does a painter still have to be licensed?
So one of the common, and thank you for raising that, by the way, not every work that requires a licensed contractor requires a permit. So painting is a, is a good example, but depending what they're painting, depending, you know, the outside or others, it, it will require a licensed contractor, but Doug does not, the building code does not require a permit for that. Flooring the same way, but we do have, you need to have a license to install flooring and tile and marble, and you'll see the list there. So don't expect to remember all of this from today, you know, I think the, the clear message from all of us is, you're raising good questions, call us, visit us, and we can clarify for you as, as best we can. But that was a very good point, because people think, oh my God, you know, permit, no permit, and often, non-licensed contractors, they'll tell you, you don't need a permit for this, what's the point? You know, anybody can do it, don't let that fool you. Did I answer your question?
They may, they may need to be licensed, but not necessarily a permit, so they're two separate things in that, in that sense.
Yes. Yeah. Did I answer your question? Yes.
To continue the question, the lady two, two rows in front of me, I had the same exact situation, somebody did work, took down the walls, did plumbing, the whole thing, with no permits. October 31st, John Ganati was by us, put out a violation code, it's now six weeks later, I've heard nothing ever since, I'm the president of the condo association. The second question is, is there penalties? Even, it turns out, if, if they go in now, and it turned out it was done correctly, but without permit beforehand, are they going to get penalized? So otherwise, you're wasting my time, and everybody's time here, to supervise, if there's no penalty.
So it, it depends, there is a penalty, but only if you don't come into compliance. Again, like I spoke about, we're looking for voluntary compliance, we notify you that... One, there is a penalty, the Florida building code, when they come in and apply for the permit, since the work commenced before a permit being issued, the building division's going to charge them four times what they would usually charge for that permit. And if it's a complex interior renovation, that's going to be quite substantial. For the code enforcement end, they, we have to give due process, they have to go through the adjudication process, once a special magistrate rules, they would give them what the daily fine would be, and if they still fail to comply, then it would become a lien on the property.
In addition, buildings code and our, our division works together, so the case may have started in code enforcement, and they get in, and if, they, we often get referrals from the code enforcement to, hey, we think something was done here by someone who's not licensed, so we'll pick up on that, and that'd be a separate thing. So we do work together. I don't know the specifics on this case, and I guess, you know, we can discuss it with him, you know, in more detail, but I'm just going to give you an idea, yes, we do work together. A key thing to remember, because if you are a licensed person, we have to have due process, as you know. So sometimes that's misinterpreted as nothing is happening, but you have to allow for due process, and you have to give them notice, you got to give them time to correct, and, and the goal is for correction, it's not necessarily to punish them, but we have no problem doing that, too. Did we answer your question, you meant? Very good, thank you.
Let me add one thing, though, so you don't see progress on it, and you'd like to see it, check it, you're next door, or you're nearby, check it on the website, and if you don't see any activity on the website, then it's okay to email us and ask a question, has anybody submitted? But theoretically, if a draft is in the system, it'll show up on the website. So, and the problem is, maybe that person isn't a licensed contractor, they can apply for a permit, because in order to apply for a permit on the website in your properties, they have to be licensed.
Just a quick question. Go ahead, we got a question here. Wait, hold on a second. Regarding hot water heaters, or the water heater, there are now the wall units. So do you have to have a special permit to do... So do you have to have a special permit to do the wall unit? I need to know that. That's something, that just occurred to me.
You're talking about a tankless water heater. The electrical requirements for a tankless water heater are significantly increased over a normal tank type. For that reason, there's limitations on our ability to permit them in your buildings. You may be aware, many of your buildings have old aluminum feeder conductors from the electrical service room. And in order to afford that opportunity to every unit owner, we would be required to upgrade the electric service to the whole building. And so we don't, we won't permit them in certain places and your building is probably one that we won't. Yeah, so I mean, that's the point. There were finite amount of electric capacity, that's all they put in. I can't make it more than it is.
I was wondering, you talk about, you know, if this wasn't permitted or if that person wasn't licensed, who are you going after? The workman or the homeowner? Who gets in trouble for this stuff?
Depends, could be either one. You know, if the owner's aiding and abetting, they get a code enforcement case. If the contractor's unlicensed, they get an unlicensed activity case. These guys can write citations. And you know, so, and even if it's a licensed contractor, we can take them to the local construction regulation board and censure them. They can get their permit pulling privileges suspended for working, you know, what they call willful code violation or fraud.
And just remember, if you're hiring unlicensed people, you're the one that hired them, so you have some liability also. I mean, we can go over, get them because they don't have a license, but ultimately, if they've done work to your place and you don't have a permit and they're not licensed, well, it's your place, you're ultimately going to be responsible for fixing it. So that's another word of advice to not hire them.
And hang on, a quick tip that we found in our cases, believe it or not, the unlicensed contractors, they charge more than the licensed contractors. I know people get surprised with that, but that's what happens a lot. So be careful. Just ask, 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 and if they don't give you, you know, the red flag goes up. But you are paying more for unlicensed than...
Can I ask this question? As I ride around the village, I see, you know, you guys were talking about the lanai's and so forth. Let's go back to the air conditioning. Air conditioning is required permits. So when I ride around the village, I look at the lanai's with many of them that have air conditions that have been cut through the wall. Are they legal? And secondly, I'd like to ask another question. I had, I asked John the other day, I had a woman come to me and she wanted to put split air conditioners in the middle apartment. So she wanted to put the compressors on the side of the building. We already have two compressors on the side of the building and two in front of us because it's an inside apartment. She wanted to run the lines over the other apartments into her third apartment, okay? So I called John, I asked John about it and so forth, and I refused her. I told her that can't be done. But now she's asking to cut through the wall, the cement wall, to put an exterior air conditioner into the lanai. Does a permit have to be required for that? And most of them, I think, were done illegally. Go ahead.
Yes. You need a dedicated electrical receptacle. And you got one back here, Mike next, we're ignoring, I think Belinda's back there. Yes, you need a dedicated electrical receptacle for an air conditioning unit because what the NEC says is you can't use more than 70% of the circuit ampacity for one single appliance. So a window unit will require a dedicated receptacle because it's going to use more than 70% of that. It could theoretically be permitted. I'm not going to say we won't because we try to figure out how to permit stuff because we want it to be safe. Otherwise people would... Yeah, yeah, I understand what you're saying. And they still sell, Home Depot sells window units, you know, I have a couple at my house, but they are all legal, there's a hole in the wall, there's a dedicated receptacle, you know. I guess the point is, it depends, but it would take, if it's a new one that wasn't there, they're installing, that's probably a permit. Oh, the mini-split question, that's your call. We can permit mini-splits, we permit them every day. But the point is, if the POA doesn't want to allow them to have it, that's not my call, that's yours. Yeah, that's not, again, unless the electrical capacity is not sufficient to do that, they got to run circuits, they got to go through common elements, that really takes a POA approval. That would be one that would trip the threshold that the POA has to sign off. That's your call, not mine.
Question I have is, if the, let's say the owner is having all this done and they get, they don't respond to anything that you're doing, does the association get cited?
The association wouldn't get cited for something happening in the interior of a townhouse or condo. So the association only gets cited if it's common elements, you know, a common area, common elements, like the balconies or the stairs, things of that nature.
The only exception is the association could get penalized if during illegal work, which happened here, where they ripped out a load-bearing wall and we condemned the unit and then we went out to inspect and the whole floor system was eaten up with termites. You know the one I'm talking about? So that one, yep, I'm sorry about the bad news and everybody gets hurt by that. But you know, it is what it is. It's not the fault necessarily of the county, it's not the fault of that individual unit owner. For whatever reason, the termites seem to love that floor system.
Is a permit required, when a permit is required for electrical work, if the electrician is licensed and can the, does the worker, his worker, need to be licensed?
The old journeyman rules have kind of been watered down, so the building division cannot require a journeyman to be on site anymore. It used to be in the law, but it's not there anymore. You know, that's the decision of the electrician. There is an electrical contractor license in the loop and they're responsible for the electric. So if they're using unlicensed people and the work is poor quality, then that would be something, it could be a referral to Oscar's group or to the local construction regulation board for discipline.
Hang on a minute. So, and just to clarify, so the licensed contractor is the one who pulls the permit, thereby law responsible. The law also say they can have people working under them, under their supervision, but no matter, it doesn't matter what the people working under them do, the licensed contractor is still responsible for all of them. Okay? So it's not like somebody came in, is unlicensed, "Oh, I don't know what happened to them." Sometime they tell you, the certified, the licensed contractor will tell you, "Well, I don't know," then, "No, you're responsible." We hold them responsible for...
Does a permit need to be pulled for high hats in the kitchen? That didn't exist prior.
If it's a high hat and it was a surface mount fixture, the answer is yes. Because you've changed, you've changed the equipment. Exact replacement is allowed without a permit and a licensed contractor would know that. But if it's an unlicensed person, they might go in there and hang chandeliers and ceiling fans and, you know, there are load requirements on those boxes that you hang ceiling fans. So you can't just automatically bolt in a ceiling fan where there was a covered fixture.
Thank you. We have one question left and this gentleman has been very patient. And here you go.
Yeah, going back to what this gentleman was saying about putting in a wall unit. I ran into this situation in our building. The guy wanted to put in central, he had a window unit. I got with our attorney and if you've got the old documents like we had, any of that area outside your, outside wall of your building is common area. The only way that they can set that unit out there according to our documents is 100% approval of the unit owners, not a board decision. So the guy wanted to put, and a lot of these are closing in the lanai's and they're putting these through the wall, split units, the same thing. That's common area. That belongs to every unit owner. So to give that guy permission to set a unit outside, legally you have to give him 100% approval of all the unit owners, which chances are, you're not going to get it. Because we ran it by our attorney, that's the answer that we were given. So it's not a board decision if he wants to set something out there. That's decision up to all of the unit owners. So keep that in mind because this sets precedence. Then it's, "Well, this guy put one in, why can't I put one in?" Especially on these split units. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of planning, zoning and building, we thank you very much for this opportunity, welcoming us into your community. If you would like, if you do not have, we have additional brochures, we have our business cards. We encourage you to contact us individually. We are very accessible via email, social media, and certainly by telephone. And our offices are open Monday through Friday. So thank you and happy holidays.